Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 24th meeting of the Fiscal Management Committee, the first of our committee's meetings during this fiscal year. This year, the board, this committee is going to focus very closely on the Board's strategic priority of operational excellence, which really encompasses every area of our work. We expect our work to be high-quality, efficiently done. We expect MCPS to treat people well while we are doing our work, and so that will be our focus. Before we get started, I am going to ask, I should have identified myself. I am Lynn Harris. My pronouns are she/her, and I am very happy to chair this committee, and I will have my colleagues on the committee introduce themselves, beginning online with Ms. Mondrosky.
Good morning. I'm Rebecca Mondrosky, District 2.
Good morning, everyone. Julie Yang, District 3. Happy to see all of you today.
And the first item on our agenda is the Fiscal Management Committee's annual work plan. As I said, we are focusing this year very closely on the strategic priority of operational excellence, looking at things like how we are operationalizing the very in-depth and wide-ranging transportation study that was conducted over the past 14 months, and what we're doing to improve our internal workflow so that we are more efficient and a better partner to all of those who seek to work with us as collaborators through MOUs, through procurement, through contracting. And we will also be looking at how we are being more efficient and effective in our work around the operating and capital budgets, being more transparent, being more timely in our communications, and making sure that our processes that need to be shared with community are happening timely and are happening continuously instead of waiting till the end of a decision cycle and announcing a result, and then just seeing what happens after that. So I will ask my colleagues if they have any questions or comments on the current annual work plan before it goes to the Board as a whole this Thursday for approval. And I will note, as all of my colleagues know, we start the year with a plan. However, events can intervene, and we could, can add different topics as the year goes on if we need to do so. So I will ask my colleagues, any comments or questions before we move this? Okay. Thank you very much. So moving on, we have the first item on our agenda, the first substantive item on our agenda. We will be looking at category 12 expenses. And I'm going to have staff come to the table and introduce themselves before we present. And just for the uninitiated, we call these category 12 expenses because the way the state requires us to to report our expenses to the state is in categories. And so that is how we are required to create a budget and share those expenses. But that doesn't mean that we can't also do other things to make sure people actually understand better what those mean. And I appreciate Ms. Yang for just reminding me. There's also another informational item on the agenda, which is the summary from our June 27th meeting. And I'll just ask my colleagues quickly, any comments or concerns about that summary?
No.
Okay, good, moving on. So I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Alfonso Windsor and Mr. Riley to get us started.
Good morning, excuse me. Good morning, members of the Board. Thank you for having us this morning, and thank you for setting up category 12, you know, so perfectly because it is a state-required category. It is how we have to report to our county council, to the state. And it's a way to be able to compare expenses, the same similar expenses across all local educational agencies in the state of Maryland. And category 12 is fixed charges, which includes our benefits, you know, includes our reimbursement for staff professional development and so on. There are two things that I want to point to category 12 fixed expenses overall. We, as you know, we provide monthly financial monitoring reports to the Board where category 12 is included as a much, not as detailed as the report right now that we're going to provide is. Additionally, in September, we close out, we provide a letter to the Board and the county council to close out the previous fiscal year and to give an overview of where we are in terms of category 12, since it does include our employee benefit plan. And then in March, we give an update on where we are throughout the year so that, you know, so that the Board and the county council and our stakeholders understand where we are at that point in time. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. Riley to continue the presentation.
Morning, everybody. So next slide, please. So as Ms. Alfonso Windsor mentioned, category 12 fixed charges, it's actually our second biggest category next to instructional salaries. And the biggest components of that are, which will be talking about soon, is our pension and our health care. So health care, a lot of turbulence during that, and this will shed some light on what happened during that year, during the year. So the balance, as you can see, was a $6.8 million deficit in category 12. So according to COMAR, we cannot have any negatives in category, in any of the categories. So if you recall, at the last board meeting, September 12th, we did a categorical transfer, which takes this negative deficit into account. And as was mentioned, so March is where we kind of provide the Board and the county an estimate of where we're at with these large funds that are within category 12. In September, now we're giving you basically the final. It's very close to final. We are actually going to finish our audit, annual audit, this Friday, latest Monday, September 30th, where we'll have actual amounts for category 12.
And just a quick clarifying question for the millions in the viewing audience. When we say categorical transfer, that is a common practice, so yes.
Yeah, common practice, and we do it, the county lets us do this at the end of the year. So we did it recently in September, and we looked at all the categories that were negative from budget to actual. This year, there were more categories that were in that situation, largely due to inflation, especially, and we'll talk about this in category 12, inflation hit many of our categories. So we had, I think it was four or five categories that were in deficit that had to be covered by categories where we had surplus. And that's the need for that categorical transfer. The other thing is that our bottom line, our auto sign fund balance has to be positive as well, too. So based on the audit so far, we're in good shape with both those items.
And so just basically, what that means is when we allocate funds in the operating budget at the beginning of the year, and then we track everything in these categories as the year progresses. And this is a mechanism that allows us to autocorrect for areas of expenditure that we didn't, that the projected didn't actually materialize, and other areas that we, as you said, went into deficit, so that the money isn't, doesn't have to remain where it was initially allocated if at the end of the year, there is money that can be redirected.
Correct, yeah. And then, you know, with good financial management, and as Ms. Alfonso mentioned, we kind of provide reports throughout the year on a monthly basis to show where we're at. You know, we have to ensure that we have the positive funds to cover those deficits. And in this case, we did, and we have been for the last 40 years.
Yeah, and when you say COMAR, that's state law, the code in Maryland. That is, the state law requires us not to go into the red.
Correct, that's right.
If I may, just really quickly, you know, to your point also, throughout the year, there might be some needs that come up that we haven't anticipated. So through that financial monitoring process, that's how we are able to provide funds to support those needs. It might be transportation, it might be security, you know, little things that, you know, we did not anticipate what would happen. And through our financial monitoring process, we can see where we might have, you know, some potential surplus that we can cover those needs as they arise.
Next slide, please. So as was mentioned, the two biggest components of category 12 is our health insurance and our pension or retirement. So I want to bring your attention to the first two lines there. We further divide the health insurance into our active employee group insurance, which is a separate trust, as well as our retiree group insurance, again, a separate trust. So if you can see, the FY '24 budgeted $320 million. The actual was $337 million. Some of that budget was adjusted because, as we all know, our health insurance, we originally projected about a 9% increase, and it was over 12%. So the MCPS absorbs most of that, had to absorb most of that increase. And what happened was during the middle of the year, we were struggling to determine, how are we going to make those payments to the health insurance fund to support everybody's health care? Couple of ways we had to do, we had to address that was through expenditure restriction or freeze. So some of that money, so when you see the actual, that includes some additional money that was derived from that expenditure restriction. All the ways that we supported it was with, helped the county. The county provided us with $10 million additional supplemental funding. 7.5 of that was used to support the active employee group insurance trust, and then 2.5 was for the retirees. In addition, the county also provided the retiree fund an additional $10 million that, out of the OPEB contribution, which was normally 27.2, they allowed us to use $10 million of that for ongoing costs within the retiree health insurance. So up there, you're going to see what our actual cost is, and the variance was $13.2 million. That is because we did use an additional $13 million that was derived from the freeze, and that's why our actual was over budget in that area. In the retiree group insurance, you'll see the normal projected cost was $31.2 million, and the actual cost was 31.2. I mentioned the two areas where the county assisted there, too. In that case, we did mid-year budget amendment to address that. That's why that's showing as, you know, no adjustment there.
Mr. Riley, how is the $10 million reflected on this sheet? Is it reflected in the budgeted already, included in that already? Okay.
Yeah, 7.5 was added to the budgeted for active and 2.5 for the retiree.
Okay, so then, when you say the projected was 9% increase, but the actual was 12% increase, so the 12% increase is actually the actual cost at the end that we see. And when you say the 9%, it's 9% plus the $10 million is the budgeted column that we see.
So it's a little bit different because, remember, the 9% increase that we passed on to the employees as a result of the healthcare cost was as of January of 2024, which only covers about half of the fiscal year, right? So then we realized that the actual increase was going to be about 12%. So it's not throughout the entire fiscal year because the health plan is on a calendar basis, and our financial monitoring and our finances are through a fiscal year basis. So you're not going to see one-to-one in terms of those 9% and 12% increases. As Mr. Riley mentioned, the budget, any appropriation that we get from the county council, we do add it to the budget amount. So when you look at the $333 million in actual cost, it's because we know that we were in a deficit, that we were going to end up in a deficit at the end of the year in terms of the overall trust fund for EVP. And we push forward, you know, in terms of additional expenditures that were covered through our negative balance in the EVP fund. So we allow the EVP fund to go into a negative because we knew that we were going to have positives in other categories to offset the benefit plan and be able to support, you know, the consistent deficits that we see moving forward. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, just to clarify a little, too, what we're looking at up here is the Board's contribution, which is one piece of the associated funds. We also have employee contributions and rebates and other things, revenue items. So when you look there, retiree group insurance, that is what MCPS contributed. It is going to be in the category 12 letter that's going to go out on September 30th. But just to give you an update, last year, our financial statement balance in the active fund, we were at $11.5 million in deficit. This year, with everything that happened, we incurred another $19.7 million in expense. So we're at June 30th, 2024, which will be reflected in our financial statements, we're at a $31.3 million deficit in our active insurance fund, internal service fund. For the retirees, just to give you a little background on that. So in the March letter, we were saying that we were going to experience a loss as well, too. So in the, in that fund, we were $10.9 million to the good. Last year, we experienced 14.6 negative. So that, the EVP fund, which we call the retiree insurance fund, was minus 3.7. Now, with the retiree health insurance, when you look at that in the ACFA, in our financial report, it's going to look a little, you're not going to see the retiree insurance fund. That gets rolled up into our OPEB fund, which to date has $864 million. That gets combined to what was in that retiree insurance trust. So that's kind of, you know, we're looking at a piece that flows into other funds. So I just wanted to give you an idea of where that retiree group insurance ends up on the financial statement. Good news is, because of the balance that's accrued that, over the last couple of years, we're well into 30% funded, which is excellent for OPEB funds for other school districts and other public entities around the country. So that's the story on health insurance. Next item there is FICA. That one is, you know, taxes related to our payroll, and payroll, we pretty much got down pat. We kind of know what that is, so there's usually very little variance on the FICA. But that is an employer expense as well, too, that comes out of CAT 12. Next item is retirement. So when we say retirement, we actually have folks that are in our state retirement, and we have our local retirement as well, too. The contribution of the 150, it's kind of split half and half. And that one, you know, we do what we, the actuaries look and determine what the contribution should be for our local and as well as the state. We're told what that amount is by the state actuaries, and we make those payments as well, too. That, in our pension funds, were actually another good year for investments. So we're actually at 85.8% funded in our local pension, which you'll see in the ACFA, which is good, that's been increasing steadily over the years. So next item is non-tax-supported grants. You're looking at a variance there, a positive variance. What that represents is basically what's left over of SR3. So that, you know, there's a variance there, but that's going to be spent in FY '25 between now and September 30th. So next item is risk management or self-insurance. This is basically workers' compensation, and the budget for that is, we get a number from the county. We're part of the county self-insurance program. And that amount, the actual amount was a little less this year, so we had a positive variance there. Tuition reimbursement, we are at 5.5. We were budgeted, and we spent close to that 5.4 million. And then finally miscellaneous, we were, we had a deficit there. That is, that represents the MACAP Association leave conversion. So we were, we had more actual cost there than what was budgeted, so. So that's the story on the CAT 12 expenses.
Can you explain the miscellaneous one more time, Mr. Riley?
Yeah, so there's a couple of small items that are, you know, under $100,000. But the large component of that is, we have a benefit for our MACAP folks and both folks where they can convert leave into cash. That cash, we, in any budgeted year, we spend that cash. Now, it's really leave, so in the long run, there is, you know, there's some kind of contribution from the employees there. They're giving up some leave. But from a cash perspective, from a budget perspective, that cost us 3.0, almost $2.6 million. There's other things in miscellaneous, so that's why there was a negative there.
So that leave is the sick leave or any leave when people retire, they can cash out according to our negotiations with the associations, right?
So what, this is a little bit different. So this is part of our negotiating agreements, and as part of our negotiating agreements, both MACAP and 12-month MCEA members, they can choose to convert into 403B or into cash up to 10 days of their leave prior to retirement. And that's what this is about. This is the conversion for MACAP members of up to 10 days of annual leave into their 403B or into cash component. And for MCEA 12-month employees, similar. And keep in mind that this year, you know, due to the IRS rules, they did take 10% or 15% penalty on any cash out or conversion of that leave.
I'm just wondering, because we have been doing this, this leave, taking cash out of leave, it's a long-term practice that we have with the associations. Why do we see such a difference between the budgeted and the actual cost?
Yeah, that was from recent, over the last two years, there's been changes in those negotiations and the benefit itself. So it's taking a little bit of time for, to get that budgeted number, to catch up what the actuals were. So as we kind of get more experience with it, we'll adjust budget to meet what we expect will be the actual.
Right, this is three times than the budgeted amount, right? Yeah, okay.
So it was a year ago that the benefit increased from five days to 10 days. So that was negotiated two years ago. So in the past, they had up to five days specifically for MACAP, and now it was increased to 10 days. And also, you know, as the staff becomes, you know, have more years in the system, they're able to cash, you know, to take that option. It's not a requirement, it's an option that they have. So obviously, we do have to adjust that based on the new negotiated agreements or, you know, whatever comes out, you know, once we enter into negotiations again. But it usually takes a couple of years just to establish the trends of where the employees are.
So there is, although this is a long-term practice, but there is a change in how many days was allotted. Okay, in the agreement. Thank you.
All right, so we spent some time talking about what happened during this year with the health insurance fund. I'm going to pass it back to Ms. Alfonso Windsor to talk about what next year might look like.
So you know, we have been talking since last year about our employee benefit plan.
So, you know, we have been talking since last year about our employee benefit plan and how we are seeing increased health costs and as well as increase in large claims, which drive our healthcare costs. And it's something that, you know, the county council appropriated $40 million last year for employee benefit plan. The board adopted that budget, you know, to make sure that, you know, hopefully in the next couple of years, we can reduce that deficit and be more solid, you know, viable in terms of our benefit plan. We are projecting that for FY25, we are going to see between a 50 and a $60 million deficit between actives and retirees in our employee health benefit plan. This is even considering the funding that we put in last year, like I just mentioned, the 40 million. Last year, we also did a $5 million appropriation. If you remember from our fund balance, the $20 million that Mr. Riley referred to in terms of the county council, that additional appropriation, 10 million of that was a one-time benefit. We analyzed our fund balance this year. We know that we have about $7 million in interest income that was earned last year that was moved forward to FY25 as part of our fund balance. So December, January of this year, as we are doing our financial monitoring and looking closer at employee benefit plan, we are probably going to come back to the board to recommend an appropriation of $7 million from that interest revenue to put towards our employee benefit plan. Additionally, we are starting negotiations, you know, we have an interest in negotiating with our associations in relations to our employee benefit plan and seeing if I can be more sustainable over time as a result of the increasing cost that we're seeing and that are being realized year after year. We meet with our actuaries, Aon, every year just to look at where the trends are going to be. That meeting is scheduled for later in this week, just to see where the budget is going to be and any updates in terms of projections. So that's where we are. You know, we're looking forward to starting those conversations, which, some of which we've already started with our associations as we move forward. And then it's something that is going to have to consider again for the, you know, FY26 budget as we move forward.
In the meeting you are going to have with Aon later this week, would they provide or would you work out a projected percentage increase for next year?
That is something that they have already given an analysis for. We're still trying to, you know, determine that and we'll meet with, that is not something that is negotiated, but we will meet with the associations later on this month to let them know what any rate increases might be for. Those would start in January of this year. And that is not, that is just making sure that we balance an increasing cost, the breakdown between our cost, our share and their share.
I think I didn't ask my question clear enough. My, when we were discussing the active employee group insurance, you mentioned the FY2024 budgeted, you budgeted a projected 9% inflationary cost to it. So my question is, do Aon or will Aon provide us with inflationary projection, percentage projection for the next fiscal year?
They have. So they have projected in terms of the rate changes, right, for starting of this January. We're still finalizing that analysis so that we can determine, you know, discuss it with the superintendent and, you know, the board on what those rate increases will be realized. This meeting this week is to determine the FY26, what they see for FY26 as an increase in cost and update any projections that they have for this year. Sorry, and now we're opening for any discussions or any questions that you might have.
I'm going to ask Ms. Mondra, oh, there she is. Ms. Mondraski, any questions?
I'm okay, thank you.
I did have a question, which gets more to process. So some of these things, we do manage our health plan and some of those elements are negotiated with our associations. And I have, I think all of us have been having conversations with our retirees association who are, who do pay more. They have a much greater cost share than our active employees. And they have been watching over time, some of our processes and procedures as it relates to their benefit packages. And we've had to make some adjustments. And they, I understand, are able to monitor the negotiation sessions, but not participate. And I am just wondering, since their interests are in some ways the same, but in other ways different, if there is a way that we can give them a more participatory role in those negotiations, at least to the point where they can actually raise and ask questions that relate to, more specifically to them and might not be top of mind to the associations as they're looking at their active duty employees.
So thank you for that question. We did meet with the retiree association, members of the retiree association last month, late last month. And we, one of our agreements, we agreed to work with, more closely with them and keep them more informed as we go through this process. They are part of some of the conversations at the table. And we agreed to come to some of their members' meetings to discuss what's coming, you know, what has been discussed, and then bring it back to their core group that sits at those tables, you know, and keep them updating of where we're going.
Okay, okay.
One of the things we let them know too was, you know, we talked about cost share and what it costs for employees or retirees. So these are basically estimates that are done at the beginning of the year. Like, it's going to be dependent on what those actual costs were too. So the retirees did an analysis and it looked like in some years, they were more than the 36% amount that is expected from the retiree contribution. However, in the last few years, as I mentioned, MCPS is absorbing more of the cost for the actives and the retirees, it was less than that. So one of the things, in addition to speaking with them a couple of times a year, we're also going to say, hey, where do we end up with that percentage, just for transparency?
Yeah. And I think, did I see, yeah, Ms. Mondraski?
Thanks, Ms. Sarris. I love, I appreciate that question so much. That was something that I was going to bring up later. But I hear your response, but I'm just curious as to why we can't have them actually have a seat at the table?
For negotiations? Is that because they're not current members of MCPS, so they're not represented by one of our associations?
Okay, so the best we can do is just update them.
Yes, and bring back, you know, some of those, you know, as we work through the negotiations with them, obviously, some of it, you know, it's, as we work with the associations, it's that back and forth, right? In, you know, where we're going to end up, where we're going, some of it is time sensitive, some of it is, you know, part of that negotiating process. But we did agree with them to, you know, to make sure that we keep them updated. We also have made some changes as a result of the last meeting that we have with the retiree association and conversations with the superintendent. Up to this year, they were not able to use $2,000 for their in-network for dental implants. We, you know, we have agreed to, you know, that they will be able to have the same benefit as the active. You know, January 1st of this year, they'll be able to use that $2,000 towards the dental implants. And then in January of next year, they'll be able to, the insurance will cover their hearing, you know, any hearing aids. And that is part of how we work with them too. We want to make sure, we realize that some of those things happened in the past because we weren't having those communications. And as changes were made to the active plan, they were not made to the retirees' plan. But we are committed to make sure that we're having those conversations with them and to keep all that in mind as we're going through the negotiations.
Well, that's great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it because I know it's been a huge concern for them.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you both. And now we will be moving on to the oh-so-sexy topic of our work around our internal audits and financial controls. And joining us at the table is MJ Bergstrasser, who supervises the board's internal audit unit, which is a small but very capable group of people who are continuously working with schools and other aspects of our financial, the financial processes of this very large organization. So I will turn it over to Ms. Bergstrasser.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for having me. Today, I'm here to report the 2024 fiscal year data report and the fiscal year 2025 internal audit work plan that we have. So if I could just do the next slide. So we'll start off with the types of audits that we conduct. There's a variety of them. The independent activity funds, which is what we call the IAF, that's the school funds. That's our main concentration that we do. We look at the independent activity funds of schools. We look at elementary schools every three years, middle schools every 18 months, high schools every, once a year. And then also, anytime we have new principals, we need to go out and conduct some type of audit, either a review of an audit that had just been conducted or we come and do another audit. So in FY25, we have 108 schools scheduled. I'm not sure if we'll get to those because we have so many new principals and other activities. When we get into the other data, you'll see this, in FY24, we did not do all high schools because we felt some of the high schools could get pushed out farther than a year because they had no findings and had pretty good financial people there. And we felt that we needed to focus on other schools that needed help. We have had a lot of turnover at the schools, enormous amount of new people, people coming in with no background. So we are doing a lot of training and support to get them up and running. So we haven't been able to do as many audits. One of the other things we do is the centralized investment fund, which is what we call the CIF. We used to do that every year. The past several years, we've found no internal controls, any issues there. So now we've put that off to do it every three years. But the balance at June 30th, 2024, we had approximately $12 million and the interest rate is 3.28%. And so we have 203 schools out of the 210 investing. We just have a few schools, might be a brand-new school that doesn't have enough money yet, or some schools just don't have the funding. But we're trying to help every school put some money into the centralized investment fund because it is generating some good interest for the schools that they can use.
And just for the uninitiated, where is that money coming from?
So every school has their IAF.
Yep.
And it's broken out into all their regular chart of accounts, but it's where it's housed. It can be housed in a checking account or a savings account. So it's just basically when the checking account gets to a balance that is more than their needs, we suggest they transfer some to the savings account, sort of like your personal, you know, if you were trying to save. So that's where that comes from. We also do the transportation depot inventory and we look at the internal controls and determine if the inventory values are accurate. And over the last few years, we've had very few variances. Pretty much everything that they have in their system, when we did our spot sampling, we were able to find. Then we do the cell tower revenue and the basic idea is determine compliance with the sharing formula and the accounting of the funds to make sure that the funds that were supposed to go to all the schools did go to the schools and every school did get them. We also reconcile student parking permits. Every high school has parking permits and we ask them to return any unsold permits. And so then we do an analysis of how many were they issued, sold, returned, and that should be the money that they have. Sometimes there's a variance because a school may sell a season pass, which is $25 for semester one, which is a different price. But we do try to, you know, get any differences resolved and we have been able to do that. Payroll operations, we have been trying to do payroll audits. We have a new system that'll be rolling out January 1. So we'll probably up the payroll audits just to make sure that this new system, we do have the internal controls in place that should be there. And then we do JP Morgan purchase card audits of offices. We look at the JP Morgan card at every school during our audit, but we felt that it was important to also look at some offices that have JP Morgan cards. So we try to do that on a routine basis if we can. Again, our focus is more on the IAF, but then we have other audits that we conduct. Any questions on those before we go to the next slide?
For the JP Morgan purchase cards, when we do offices, how often are they on the rotation to be located?
How often do we do office audits? We try to probably get two or three done a year. It's just trying to get it into the schedule.
Okay, and then for, we have a lot of offices. To go through all of our offices, how many years does it take?
It would depend how many offices. We do have a lot of offices. Now, not every office has JP Morgan cards. But again, with everything else that we're asked to concentrate on, you know, I only have six auditors, so I try to get as many of those. Also, the controller's office is doing spot audits for all cardholders. They'll just randomly ask to look at, you know, transactions.
I would like to, like, learn more, a little bit more about these JP Morgan cards because in the past, we have detected, you know, which shows that our internal audit system work. But I would like to know a little bit more about the collaboration. You mentioned there's our controller's office and your office and see what that process looked like for.
We can follow up with that.
I will appreciate that.
Any other before the next slide?
Just a quick question. How do you coordinate with the controller's office on the various audits that are going on?
I just have let them know which offices we've selected to do the audit. They do a random, they call them desk reviews. That's kind of what they're doing. And they'll do that for schools also.
Yeah, I was going to clarify, we work with internal audit to make sure we have coverage for that. And as Ms. Bergstrasser mentioned, we call them desk reviews. And we have, you know, we've had a couple of audits on our P-card over the last couple of years. So we bumped up those internal controls as well too. One of the things that we do is everybody starts fresh. Nobody rolls, everybody has to apply and start with a fresh balance. And we've lowered those monthly and per purchase balances as well too. And we've also lowered the number of cards as well too. So these are things that we integrate and work together to improve internal controls in that area.
I appreciate that information. However, I do still want to see if there is ever a schedule, okay, and to understand a little bit more about this process.
Okay, next slide. So this is the internal audit responsibilities, some of the things that we do. We do investigations from the supervisory channel. And this year, we did have two requests that came through and we did look into those and wrote reports to the board. Anonymous hotline, which is called the Lighthouse tip line. This year, we had 118 complaints that we have to read, respond, assign, and then do the follow-up and then close. So we have to follow it all the way through. We work closely with DCI. We look closely with the directors or associate superintendents, ersky, employee department, depending on what kind of complaint it is. But we did have an enormous amount of complaints this year come through.
And just to, because this has been a topic of interest over the past year, definitely. But through the Lighthouse as a general way for people to report anonymously or not anonymously, your office receives, but which ones does your office handle?
The only ones that we actually do an investigation or audit on is if there is some type of fraud or school funds. And most of it would go as payroll audits or internal control audits. We had very few of those. Most of them, we dealt with the associate superintendent and director to resolve issues between an employee and possibly the principal. DCI got involved in a few where they, you know, called in the employee and handled it. But our office did very few actual investigations due to anything that came through Lighthouse. The next, we manage the external audit contract. Oh, was there a question?
Any other? I think we're good.
Okay, I lost the slideshow. Oh. Okay, so we manage the external audit contract, and we work to help review the MCPS financial statements. I work with Mr. Riley's and Dan Kelly on that. And then we work with the auditors for the Maryland State Department of Education and the Office of Legislative Audits. When they, they do the legislative audits every six years and the Maryland State Department every two years. So I kind of coordinate, basically, I'm the coordinator for all of these audits. Assist and advice to schools. We, on an average, get more than 100 emails and phone calls a week, just people asking questions. It is starting to get more than that at times due to all the new people, and we're trying to give as much support to the new financial agents as possible so that they are starting off on the right foot and that they understand everything. We do trainings. We consult for the school financiers. We do training on the school funds online, and we have an online school cash payment system that we also do live training. So we try to get everyone to understand, you know, the financial responsibilities and the systems we have. I put together the annual financial report on the IAF, and that goes into the annual comprehensive financial report. And then every year, we have to roll over the financial data. So every school's information from FY24, I rolled in to start the new year for FY25, and we review their annual reports. And all of the annual report information goes into the report that you've been provided. The next slide are the investigations. Schools and officers can request an audit due to financial or payroll concerns. A lot of times, people will come in and they'll just ask for an audit. And again, with every new principal, we try to come in and do an audit or come in and discuss what the prior audit was, if it's recent, just so they have a clue as to what the findings were, what the action plan was, and what they need to do to keep on the right track. And then we conduct, so we'll conduct an audit and reports the findings. If warranted, the internal audit will contact the Department of Compliance and Investigation, which we did for more of the in-depth ones. And all the results of the investigations are reported to the superintendent, so if we had any. And we didn't have any investigations that caused us to have to do that this year. But that's escalation policy. And then the next slide shows some data. So this is high school receipts versus dispersments as of June 30. So as you can see, some high schools have more spending than others. What we like to see is that the receipts and dispersments are fairly close and not a lot of difference. But, so the green is the receipts and the orange is the dispersments for every high school.
I have a question right here. So what happens when a school overspent? I see a few schools did.
So they have, so this is just information, so for high schools, they spent 15.8 million is what they received, 15.8 million approximately, and they spent 15.1 combined. But they also, every year, their IAF builds up. So they may, if you look, a school may bring in 20,000 and spend 18. So now we have an extra two. And so that school's been here for 50 years, the IAF balance builds up. So even if they spend more than they had, they had a surplus.
Okay. And then do we have, as best practice, do we have a recommended, maybe minimum balance schools to keep, or that's not a thing?
It's whatever. I mean, we recommend if their checking account gets to be a certain level, move it to the savings, but in all, overall balance, that's the school's money. That's money that's been raised by the students. And we have, you know, schools that have very productive PTAs, booster clubs, and foundations. We have schools that the students are very active and do a lot of fundraising. And then we have schools that struggle. And then that's, you know, where you see the differences. Next slide is the middle schools. And again, this just shows you the receipts compared to the dispersments. Overall, middle schools received approximately 5.1 million and spent approximately 4.9 million combined. But as you can see, there's a big difference in what some schools spend and receive compared to others.
Yeah, and I'm, that's glaring here. And I guess part of the community's questions always is, do we do a root cause here? And because on the surface, this looks quite inequitable. But you can't, if people raise money to support their school, they do that. So do we have an understanding of why, you know, I mean, clearly Kevin John is the outlier here, but why, what are they doing there to raise?
And again, I'd have to look into the detail, but Kevin John could have gotten a very large donation.
Which I believe they did.
And I believe they did, too. And then there's other schools, Montgomery Village, they're not getting donations. They're not getting that kind of funding. A lot of the schools that got a lot of income, most likely, it came from donations.
Yeah.
Or grants that they apply for.
Yeah.
Ms. Bergstreser, can I just ask a quick question, please?
Yes, go ahead.
In reference to that, because I was looking at that as well when I was preparing for the meeting, and, you know, one of the things that we've frequently, very frequently, spoken about at the board table is trying to assess ways of making this more equitable for schools that aren't able to raise as much money. Are we giving them a larger portion of what we distribute to our schools to ensure, be able to ensure that they have equal number of field trips and equal number of whatever activities the IAF goes towards?
So thank you for that question. We have established Equity Funding Work Group. We're actually meeting later today to try to identify some of those inequalities, you know, around the schools. The work group includes parents, you know, PTA members, and we're bringing in, you know, several areas to find out, you know, what's causing some of the inequalities. Additionally, you know, the Board of Ed, as part of their adopted budget, we do have $250,000, a seed money that is there for FY25, and it's the equity fund. We are going to start a work group or a project management that will, we will be inviting principals to come in to determine a process on how we can provide opportunities to schools that don't have as much IAF funds, where the highest needs are. It's the field trips, you know? What are their highest needs that they will, that, you know? So hopefully, you know, we'll have that established, and the process will be in place for the next semester so that the schools can get that $250,000, and we can distribute it as needed to the schools. And again, that seed money that we're just, that you adopted into the budget this year so that we can determine where the highest needs is and how we can move forward to provide more equity.
On the topic of field trips, I appreciate that.
The, you know, this is one of those real situations where equal and equitable are not the same, so.
Absolutely.
On the topic of field trips, I'm wondering, some of them are from IAF, but some of them, like our community schools, they will do field trip, but that is not reflected here because that comes out from different funding source? Am I correct?
Correct. So the community schools, as you know, are part of our blueprint, and they do get funding for other items. And a lot of them, they do the needs assessment at each of the schools to determine how the money is needed and what they want to use the money from, for. And then the budget is made to allow for those schools to use it as they, as they see the need. And that's part of the blueprint, yes.
So I'm trying to understand the scope of your Equity Funding Work Group. Would they be only looking at IAF funds, or do, would they be looking at different funding source from different places?
So that's a great question and something. So right now, we're looking mainly at IAF only because, as we know, Title I schools get Title I funding, community schools get, you know, blueprint money. But a lot of those funds are restricted in the way that they can use them, right? So if we do this equity fund, we need to understand really what the needs of the schools are overall, and it might not be something that could be covered through the blueprint funding, or it might not, you know, the Title I funds might not be eligible to support those kind of activities. So we're currently looking at IAF. That will be a starting point to determine what nodes and equities are. But again, getting feedback from principals so that we understand where there is a deficiency in the kind of funding that they're getting. So that's what we hope to accomplish over the next two months, to then to set up a process on how that funding will be distributed. We are sort of anticipating a grant process where a school say, you know, we want to do two field trips, we don't have the funding for it, you know, this is the amount of money we need, and if we get applications in by a certain time, then we can determine how we can distribute that money.
And I think I have said it multiple times, for me as a board member, I wish that there is a holistic look for us, like, of different things we're doing, different resources we are providing to schools, that I can have at a glance, this school, I'm having these kind of resources. Because if I am to, to look at return of our investment, and I would like to know all that we have put in, in all different areas, including, right, IAF, but I appreciate your answer.
No, and we can definitely look into that, you know, and look into, to establish, you know, that kind of tracking.
I guess the next slide. So here's, again, just an overview of all the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, and specials. As you can see, high schools received approximately 15.8 million and spent 15.1 million. Middle schools received approximately 5.1 million and spent 4.9 million. And elementary schools received 4.2 million and spent approximately 4.1 million. And then the special schools are definitely, you know, way below that because they're so small. Next slide. This is the process for reporting audit findings. The current process, school audit reports include notes of findings and recommendations and indicates if findings are repeat. So we do that. Schools have 30 days to reply to the report with a detailed action plan if they had findings. Schools are to meet with their director of school support, student support, and review the action plan before they submit it. And then the Board of Education and select MCPS staff receive an electronic copy. And then the audit reports and the action plan are posted on the school's website and the Board of Education website. So it's all, every school's audit is out there, whether it's a payroll audit, a JP Morgan audit, if we did something special, or the current IAF audit. And then interim reviews will be conducted to ensure timely corrective actions are implemented. So basically, if we have a school that had a lot of findings and it's an elementary school, we'll try to come back in a two-year instead of three years. And then on the other side, like I mentioned, if we have schools that had no findings, we might not do that high school every year. We may push them out to 18 months or try to come in and just do a condensed audit and just select a few things to make sure they're still on the right path and all their internal controls, especially if there's been no turnover. If a school's had the same financial people and a principal, and they've had no findings, then the risk is less. And so we try to concentrate on the ones that do have the risk and had the repeat findings. The next slide, basically, the most common procurement process and procedures are the most common audit finding because there's so much in that category. That deals with checks, you know, dispersments. It also deals with the JP Morgan. It also deals with contractors. So if they have an independent contractor that comes into the school, there's particular forms and processes that need to be followed. So that category in our audit plan covers a lot. So that's why it's always the most, you know, has the most audit findings. Cash handling procedures still has the most, but has reduced immensely since we've gone to school cash online. So our adoption rate, I believe, is about 72 or 73%, which is excellent. We're hoping that this year, it even gets better. We've put out a lot of information for the schools to share. The signup process is a lot easier for parents. So we're really, you know, but we still understand that there are people who want to send in cash and check, and that will always be an option. The next finding is field trips. Again, with our new school cash online process, all of the payments that are being received are recorded into the system, so it is making field trip reconciliation much easier. And so that, we still had findings, but not as many. And then monthly reporting and financial monitoring, that would be, is the bank reconciliation done by the due date? Is the principal reviewing all the monthly reports? Are sponsors looking at their reports and returning them? So those are some of those findings. So the next slide goes basically into the audit findings. So these are all the elementary schools, and as you can see, we did an enormous amount of elementary schools this year. And the red shows the D1 finding. A D1 finding is a reportable finding, so that would be in the report. And then the green shows of those reportable findings, how many were repeats. As you can see, we have some schools that have no information, and that's because they had no audit findings. We also then have two that had quite a few. And we'll get into that. But so basically, that just shows all the audits we did, the findings that we had.
Ms. Bergstreser.
Yes.
Question here, right? So first, congratulations to the, thanks to the hard work of your office and the school staff. I see we have schools with no finding, and a lot of schools have, like, dramatically decreased all their repeat findings. But tell me, what happens if a school has repeat findings, like, consistently or over a number of years on the same item or with the same amount of?
Great question. So what we've been doing is if we find that we have a large amount of repeat findings, we invite the director to come to the audit exit. If they cannot attend, then I have a special meeting with the director and the principal, and we work on making sure that they are developing an action plan that will address these findings. And the director is then following up with that school's principal to really monitor that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay. Then my question is, because we have 211 schools, with a school that has no findings, you mentioned that's a three-year cycle that they will be looked at again, or how often would they be looked at again?
So elementary schools are every three years, and even if they didn't have any findings, we would try to get in because that's a long period of time.
Okay.
For a high school that doesn't have, we might not come every year. We may come every 18 months, but we definitely still will get in to do an audit.
With schools that we have more findings, we have 10 items, so do we do that every year, or?
We try to come back. We've had schools that had a lot of findings, and I actually went out and met with the principal every month with the director and the associate superintendent to try to get them in compliance.
Okay.
We do the best that we can to try to work with them, help them develop an action plan, and follow up.
Sounds like your office is actively managing.
We really do try, especially with these ones that have a lot of findings. Again, so that we focus on that, but then we have to also focus on the other ones. So we kind of shift our work plan as needed.
Over the years, you have been in this role for a long time. In the past, because this is only for fiscal year 2024, if you look at fiscal year 2024, do you see a downward trend in terms of findings, or we don't have that data?
So last year, FY23 report did have more schools that had higher number of findings. I'm seeing this year that we do have a lot of school with findings, and I do believe that has to do with turnover.
Okay.
And that's why we're really trying, I have one of my auditors that is focusing on new financial agents. She's actually going out and sitting with the new financial agents for two to three hours just to make sure that they're on the right track, that they know where the resources are, they know what they need to do. So instead of them coming in in July and us not coming back for So instead of them coming in in July and us not coming back for a year or two years, we're trying to get them to know what they need, how they need to do things, best practices, so that they start off on the right foot.
Proactively so.
That's the idea is to, instead of coming back two years and saying, oh, you have all these findings, we want to help them now so they don't have those issues.
Thank you.
Yeah, because you did, you are also available for training.
Absolutely.
To go out at any point, and you do host regular trainings as well.
We have all kinds of trainings. We're here to help. I present to principals, principal interns, and we're always available with phone calls and emails. So we do try to be accessible because it's best to resolve it right now than to wait.
Yeah. And just looking at these, I mean, my presumption, I know you should never presume, but is that the schools with the higher number of findings are, were a part of the turnover you've talked over?
Yes.
Their new financial assistant, new principal. So folks that have been in the gig for a while are far less likely to show up here.
That is the goal. But yes, these schools did have turnover.
Yeah.
The next slide is the same thing. You can see, these are the middle schools that we did. And we did have a few that had quite a few findings, but not as many repeats, which means we had someone probably come in new and maybe was doing things differently. And so hopefully, you know, we can get there. But we also had several that had no findings. The next slide is high schools. As you can see, we did not do all 25 high schools due to the fact that we have some that didn't need it, and we pushed them off. We had one school that did have an enormous amount of findings, but that school now has a whole new staff, new principal, new business administrator, new financial agent. So we're confident that they might not even be on the scale next year. But we will go back and work with any that had, you know, a lot. So the next slide. So these are the audits. So we did 80 audits. 19 had zero findings. Of the 19 schools, 11 had two or more audits in a row without any findings. And then there were 30 schools that had one to three, which is a good range. 27 had four to seven findings, and four schools had eight or more findings. And those are the schools that we will be concentrating on. So you can see that, you know, the number is much less, and we're hoping that the numbers in the middle will decrease as well. And the next slide is just our clean as a whistle. We just wanted to give a shout out to, these are the 19 schools that had no findings, and the asterisk is for the 11 that had two or more audits in a row with no findings. So we just wanted to have it out there to let everybody know that those are the ones. Next slide is just if there's any questions or comments.
Impressive.
It's an impressive, it is, it is.
Very.
A lot of work that happens just day in and day out in this very large school system that nobody really knows about, except for we make a point of talking about it every September in this committee.
We appreciate that.
So I'm going to look at, see if Ms. Mondroski has any additional questions. The one question I do have, so you have highlighted schools who have, you know, clean audits, multiple clean audits. And do the financial assistants, and I, what, so elementary schools basically don't have any. It's a, you know, middle schools have a financial assistant, high schools have two, financial assistant and.
A business administrator.
And a business administrator. Do they have a PLC where they can like mentor one another and ask questions of one another? Are the ones who have had these multiple clean audits sort of shared with others that, so they know, okay, I'm going to call this person if I have a question or?
So elementary schools, middle, elementary schools and secondary schools have a Dropbox kind of where they can put questions to other financial agents. And also, the financial agents for the middle schools and high schools have a PLC, we just had it last week, and they invite the elementary school admins. And so that's been an enormous help, bringing in all the elementary school admins plus the high school and middle school financial specialists. And we have people, my office presents, Diane Gomez's office presents, procurement presents. And so it's an enormous topic of converse, you know, information that all these schools get. And then the business administrators have their own PLC.
Yeah.
So yeah, there is an opportunity, and it's a great way for them to share.
Okay. Thank you. And now we can move on to the next. You've got your internal audit work plan for FY25, which has already started.
That wasn't on the PowerPoint. So I did have the work plan.
Yep.
I thought it was, I had slides, but basically, I've sort of gone over all the ones, the types of audits we're going to do. Our, I think I have 105 scheduled IAF audits. Again, like I mentioned, I'm not sure if we'll be able to get through that. We'll have to see. Again, I'm going out, I'm doing more new principals and really trying to sit and meet with them now, even if they had an audit a year ago, just to make sure they understand that what the school was, had they had it. But basically, the work plan is the same as it's been, you know, we'll try to do payroll audits, we'll try to do JP Morgan purchase reviews, and again, continue with the training.
Yeah. Thank you for everything that you do and your team, hardworking team that we see. Very happy that you all have far nicer working conditions now because.
Yes.
You all used to be in the basement at Carver, and it's, now you actually have windows.
We have windows. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. And next item, we are going to do a little operating budget FY26 preview. And as we all know, now in this time and place, basically, every day is a budget day where the budget process never stops. So we are at, you know, we're into the, we're already at the end of the first quarter of FY25. So I turn it over to you.
That is correct, Ms. Harris. The budget process never ends. We finish on June 30th, and we start right back up on July 1st, actually earlier than that. So yes, we are going to provide just an overview of where we are in the FY25 operating budget process. Like we just talked about, we started in July. We did the kickoff to the entire MCPS in terms of, you know, the budget for FY26, their same services budget like we, like we referred to, which is providing the same services as the previous year. But as we know, sometimes there's additional costs related to that. Additionally, you know, we have put forth a request to see what any additional funding is needed. And since we have a new superintendent, Dr. Taylor has brought in, you know, some of his vision. And part of that, we, you know, it's not only asking for what the FY26 request or need might be is how will that translate for the next five years as well? Any additional requests? We are providing more information or to our stakeholders. We are in the process of kicking off the budget dashboard that we have been talking about. We actually met with the Budget Advisory Committee meeting, Committee Group a couple of weeks ago, and we shared with them, we gave them a preview of the budget dashboard. We received great feedback from the group, which we are trying to make sure that we implement what we can right now before we make the budget dashboard available to the entire community. And that should be available in the next two or three weeks. Then we are, again, in the process of budget engagement, meeting with our stakeholders' groups. We are going to be scheduling some budget forums, budget forums with our students and with our communities. And we're trying to find ways to reach our communities in different ways. You know, last year, we did a television program, MCPSTV, where we talk about the budget. We also did a Facebook Live completely in Spanish. So we're attempting different ways to reach our community so that they, so that we can engagement and hear where their concerns are and how we can, you know, identify those as we move forward with the budget process. And then last but not least, we have new reporting requirements from the county council this year as part of the resolution, which it includes a history of initiatives over the last three years that we are sending to them in the next two or three weeks, as well as class size reports that we will be providing to them in October and in February to see how the new class size guidelines are impacting our schools and how things are looking moving forward. Next slide, please.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate this. And just a couple of questions from me. So, and I do, and I will just say publicly, during the superintendent search process, the board was very impressed with Dr. Taylor's fiscal acumen. It's not just that he has an MBA, but that he has demonstrated through practice and his work in other systems that he focuses very closely. And I think we've already had this conversation. You've both worked with many superintendents. And Dr. Taylor is more involved in the budget process even at this stage than is maybe typical. So I, and I know, I mean, he takes that work very seriously. So I think I'm looking forward to see how the budget year goes on. Can you tell me just quickly, so we're projecting that the budget dashboard go live, will be sometime in the middle of October?
Mid to end of October, depending on how the changes are coming. We want to make sure that we provide a video so that they can understand how to navigate the dashboard and provide more information so that, you know, it's more easily be accessible for people to understand it.
So you're getting beta testers in there to look at the language and the functions and, okay, good. Because as we talked about yesterday, Strategic Planning Committee meeting, sometimes our communications are overly complicated. And when we, are we working with communications so there's, I mean, there's a nice splashy press release when we do that work? Because this is something people have demanded, have been demanding for years, and it's finally coming online, and we really want to promote that. Are we?
Correct. So when we meet, you know, to work on next steps, and we have several meetings that we've had and scheduled, the communications team is involved so that we know how to promote it and how to make everyone aware that it's coming online.
Okay, good. And how often is the Budget Advisory Committee meeting?
The committee meeting, we had one in September, we're having one in October, we're having another one in November, and then we're going to have another one that we still have to schedule just prior to the superintendent's kickoff, recommended budget. And then we'll continue meeting with them for the rest of the year, which was something that we determined last year it didn't happen. And just like you mentioned before, to close the loop, to make sure that everybody is aware at every stage or where we are in that budget process before decisions are finally made.
Yeah, I appreciate that because that just highlights what the board has been very, very insistent on after everything we've been through. We need to be continuously monitoring and communicating and doing that in real time and not just saying we're doing it, but doing it. And so having, you know, continuing to meet with the Budget Advisory Team throughout the year, so even after, that I think is very important. So that is all the questions I have. Ms. Mondroski, any questions about the FY26 operating budget?
Can you remind me again, there was a budget dashboard talk about, and there was, I believe, a projected release date.
That we were just talking about.
Yeah, I missed that.
So originally, we're planning to release the dashboard, I believe it was September 10th. But when we met with the Budget Advisory Committee, they had several recommendations. And as a team, as a group with a committee, we determined that it was better if we waited a little bit to implement those recommendations before making it available for the public.
And do we have a projected time of when that will be?
By the end of October, we're hoping to have it up.
By the end of October. Here's my feedback. I know that we always want to have the best product when we face the public, right? And I think, but part of the work with the Budget Advisory Committee is we continuously to improve, we continuously to improve. So I think, I believe, even when we release it, people will have other feedback, right? So I want to, I want us to look at it and, oh, no, there's a suggestion. Now I have to, I have to hold off. I can't release this because there should be improvement. But with the understanding that this is our rollout and we'll continuously to take your feedback and improve it. I think that will be, I think that should be the mindset we have. And so that we don't seem to have these delay because we want to get better quality products out there. My next question is, so that was a comment. My next question is, last year, we did some community budget forums. Do we have the same plan this year, or we found there might be more productive ways to have this conversation?
So we are going to schedule a few budget forums, but we're looking at different media ways to do it and the better way to engage more of the communities. So we will have some at schools. We're looking to do some Facebook Live. We had a great response last year with a Facebook Live. We did one only in Spanish. We did some virtual and some in person. So we are, and we did one with a student member of the board that was amazingly successful. We had over 100 students that provided a lot of recommendations. So we're going to take the successes from last year, the things that really work, and trying to figure out new ways, you know, that we can spread the word and bring in more of stakeholders in our community in. So yes, we're definitely doing that. But again, like you mentioned, is continuous improvement and trying to reach a more, you know, a larger section of our communities, of all of our communities.
And that you, when do you envision these conversations happen? I know we always, that is additional thing, you know, we, in the past, we did hearings, but we added these additional things. Do you envision that happen during October, November time, or what's the timeframe?
During the month of October and the beginning of November, prior to Thanksgiving. We should have all the budget engagement, you know, all those budget forums and any other investments, you know, taking place so that it can translate right into the superintendent's recommended budget. So that is the goal, to have those engagements.
Thank you.
And just for a little bit of background, this is something that came about last spring in conversations with then Brian Hall to say, you know, there are, year to year to year, we hear from people in the community, community partners, people inside MCPS about the problems with pieces of our workflow. Our contracts, our procurement items, our MOUs, our grant processing, where the processing of these documents takes so long that our partners don't view us, our community partners don't view us as good partners, actually. They do their part quickly and efficiently, and then it's just a long wait. And multiple, I think all of my board colleagues have had times where we've had to intervene directly to ask, this has been, the partner's been told for six months it's waiting on a signature, where is it? And instances in which we're awarded grants, but the processing around that gets to a point where the grant money has a dead, a drop dead date where it has to be spent, and we leave money on the table because we can't get all of the pieces pulled together. And the concern that I've had is that everybody, you know, it's an ongoing frustration. We don't, it's not serving students well. But also, this isn't, this isn't unique work. Every industry, every school system does contracting, does procurement, does MOUs. And we seem to be an outlier in a not good way, in the length of time and the level of complexity and bureaucracy that surrounds the way we do this work. So we wanted to do a cross-office, cross-departmental, comprehensive workflow analysis to identify in these places. And we, we just have to be honest. We know, because year after year, time after time, the issues that have arisen, that we have problems in completing these. have problems in completing these flows of work efficiently and keeping people involved in this work informed. And so the point is, again, getting to operational excellence, how are we going to get better? Because I think Dr. Taylor has been absolutely clear. We have to get better. So I am happy that we are going to start talking about this, and we are going to continue to talk about this in this committee throughout this fiscal year as this process, which is beginning, moves forward. So turning it over to, I'm not sure who's going to start.
So thank you for that. I'll kick it off. And if we can go to the next PowerPoint, the Workflow Study and Analysis PowerPoint. So you know, exactly what you said, you know, we're starting this work, or we are continuing this work that started back in, you know, earlier than June, as you know, we came in front of the Fiscal Management Committee to talk about some of these processes. And part of that is, we need to understand our deficiencies in this management processes so that we can move them forward in a more efficient way, in a way that we can support our students and our staff so that they can do the work that needs to be done, that is identified in these contracts, in these MOUs, you know, moving forward. And like you said, it's a cross collaboration between the Office of the General Counsel, the Office of Procurement, and as well as the Division of Digital Innovation, which is providing the platform so that we can be able to communicate more efficiently so that everybody knows where we are in the process, and so that we can move, you know, these items, you know, more quickly through the process. Grants are a little bit different, so, you know, we'll separate the procurement contracts and MOU process, which are all kind of together, right? It all falls, that tracking mechanism that we're going to have, and then we'll go a little bit into the grants. So I'll turn it over to Ms. McIntosh-Davis to provide an update.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Angela McIntosh-Davis. I'm the Director of Procurement. And if you can go to the next slide, please. So I'm going to just give a brief overview of the first three segments, the procurement, the contracts, and the memorandum of understanding. So as you are fully aware, the district has a established process for general procurement across the district, for the workflow. And in an effort to, you know, maximize our efficiency and further streamline the efforts as Ms. Alfonso Windsor just mentioned, and we updated you on a contract process back in June at this meeting. And we mentioned that we had recently revised some of our forms in order to better understand what the requests were. It was a contract review form, so that is fully established and is working well. But to further streamline that, we took feedback after that June meeting to establish what we also mentioned was a contract management system. So as mentioned, with collaboration with the Office of General Counsel and the Department of Digital Innovation, we've been working with them in order to create this system. And with, you know, it's an internal system, literally establishing it and building it from the ground up. And we, this is something that we've needed, like as a robust solution in order to manage the numerous amount of contracts that we now have moving through our system. So through this software, we plan to improve our processes, improve efficiency, ensure consistent oversight of the agreements through the entire contract lifecycle. That is the plan. This will primarily be used for our PSAs, our professional services agreements, with our contractors, as well as any MOUs with other governmental entities or institutions, such as Montgomery College. We have some with MSDE, county partners such as DHHS, MCPD, and Montgomery County Government. It's intended to provide a centralized platform where when we start processing these agreements, they start out, of course, in a draft form. So it would go from a draft agreement, you know, to review, to redline, to approve, as we go through negotiations when necessary, to full execution of the agreement. This will make it easier for staff and stakeholders, you know, to collaborate effectively. So some of the key features of the system include user-friendly interface for initiating the contract request. So when that contract review form comes in, that basically will start that process. We'll have an automatic internal routing of the requests to the appropriate parties. So instead of a lot of phone call or email communication back and forth, it will be done through this system. There will be real-time tracking and visibility of the request process, so we will know where that agreement is in the process as it flows through. There will be integration with the, with electronic signatures for faster approvals. A unique user dashboard for each MCPS office, you know, and user, because it does flow through many different offices as it goes through that workflow process. And then email notifications via Outlook for the updates. And then we'll have, it'll be a centralized document library, so everything will be housed in one location. So if we need to see a particular contract, or if we have multiple contracts with a particular supplier, we'll be able to go into that system and easily, readily find that information. And that is, those three components, how they'll be used within that contract management system.
So much better. Just one question I have quickly. So built into this, this monitoring system and this fully automated and tracking system, are, for each point, you know, once it is initiated, is there like an expected timeline for each next step? And does the system flag when something is stuck? So this should only take three days, and it's been there for two weeks?
Right. That will have to be established. So that is what we're working through with the Office of Digital Innovation. Like, how much time are we going to give for each segment of the process? Should it sit in an area or with an office for either review and approval more than three days? So that maybe we only have a complete two-week timeline, let's just say, from, you know, from initiation to finish. Now, the only caveat there would be if, like I said, negotiation process, like when we're, when the vendor is in the middle of that and we're possibly negotiating terms, or things are just not in agreement, or, you know. So that, that may extend the time. So there would have to be some flexibility there.
And just to, for the, you know, millions listening, this is being developed. We are not operational yet.
That is correct. But it's been, it started in the summer, and we are running through some testing actually this week, today and tomorrow. So hopefully, we will see what areas still need to be tweaked, if there are any areas that we need to fine tune or add to it, and then for us to go live internally.
And I know, I mean, as we've talked about, Ms. Alfonso Windsor, each Fiscal Management Committee meeting, we're going to get an update on how we're doing.
Yes.
So that I very much appreciate. Do we have, do you have a prediction, projection, aspiration for when this new automated system is going to be, what do we say, up and running?
Up and running. I think an initial piece within our, you know, OGC procurement would probably come first, maybe in October, but we will need to train other offices, of course, on using that. So I think we also have to work in that segment of when we can conduct some of the trainings so that it can be district, you know, wide use.
And are you using periodically as you're developing, bringing in some of those end users to kind of beta test it, kick the tires a little bit?
That's what's happening this week.
Okay, awesome, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So exciting. This is tremendous. I really thank Ms. Harris' leadership and all of your work on this. And I, I would just say, not only we need it for contracts, MOUs, and grants, we also need to take a look at, maybe not this committee, and just to have a more thorough understanding of the workflow for our student registration, maintenance request, transportation, even payroll, right? There are, talking about excellence in operation. These are all the things that we need. Just one question, because I understand for some of these things, some of them are more lenient. Maybe it's just one department will get this through, right? Maybe just professional growth will get this through. But others need cross-functional, different departments. Do we, in our design of what to happen, have we, do we have some safeguards as to how this flow among the departments? And, and I always feel if there is not a person assigned to it, right, for the general public, sometimes that is just seen for them, it's going into the hole. Okay, it's supposed to be two or four weeks, but now I'm at week six, you know? Will we put into some guidelines or contacts so that we can help move the things along for cross-functional items?
Right. I think we'll find that out, Ms. Yang, this week when we start working through this, because this will be the first engagement with external people. The internal work that's been going on between the Contract Administration Team and my office, legal team, and with digital innovation is we've been telling them, we needed to do this, we needed to do that, when, you know, when, when contract gets here, this is who needs to know, things like that. So once we actually start going through the flow, I'm sure we will see what safeguards or what needs to be put in place to, you know, rectify any issues that may come up.
Looking ahead, though, looking ahead, one thing I would like to see is also communication, right, to the users. Because maybe the user from our RFP process will be very aware of this, but a community nonprofit or another academic entity might not be so clear because they, this is their first interaction with our school system. So the advertising, the promotion, those are some of the things we need to think about. Maybe better to think ahead, to say, how, how will be people be aware of where to start looking for the forms or to start this process?
Yeah. And I think too, this is an area of work that, you know, if you go into a candidate forum or any other, nobody was really talking about. But it's so essential for us to be a system that is efficient and treats people well. And so I very much appreciate this, and I think it's worth celebrating. So especially when we get to the point where we've, it's a go-live, we want to, we want to let people know in a, in a way, sometimes we are not good at taking the victory laps that we need to take. And so I think, again, working with communications as we get closer, I would love it if at, whenever it's ready, this committee gets almost a little demo where you're walking us through. If I'm, I'm a first time, I'm, I am Walter Reed Medical Center, and I'm entering into a MOU with Thomas Edison for their medical science students to come and do their clinical internships. What is my experience going to be like? What am I going to, how am I going to be kept informed? How is this process going to work for me as an outside user? As well as if I'm inside, and this is, it is my job to move this process forward, what's my experience going to be? I think it'd be interesting if you have even like a little three-minute demo. It would be very interesting, so we can see what's the user experience like.
And if I may, so remember this, an internal tracking tool? And, you know, like we talked, and you just, both of you just said this, it's just a tool, right? We're going to have to establish in the processes, and the communication is going to be key for this. So I think that is where the other work has to happen, right, before we can completely move this forward. We have to communicate, and we have to establish clear processes that everyone is aware of.
One of the things, I would just have a comment about the workflow. A lot of times, I'm wondering, a lot of steps, right? Is it really necessary to have that step? All, all the signatures we want, is it really need to be a signature, or is it just notification? I'm just thinking about for efficiency's sake, maybe this is the opportunity for every office to examine their, their procedures, right? Is this, what is the purpose of this step and intention of this step? And what is actually needed, right?
Yeah, I think that's a great point, because one of the things I've been hearing, and we definitely want efficiency, but we also want these processes effective as well too, because we have built-in internal controls here. Ms. Yang, to your point is, do we need five signatures? Can we, can we do it with three appropriate signatures? You know, and that's, that'll be part of this workflow analysis as well, too. And as we go through the, you know, the tools, you know, can we still maintain those internal controls and get things through faster? Because internal control is part of that philosophy, is you want to make sure that bad things don't happen, or, but you want to do it where it's cost-effective. The cost of the control can't be more than the risk that it's eliminating.
Yeah. Yes, and I agree. And I think because you started talking, you started at the very beginning, Ms. McIntosh-Davis, talking about our established process. Our established process was bad. It was clearly not industry-based best practices because of all of the, it was too often getting stuck in bottlenecks. And so starting from that premise of looking at, how do other large organizations manage this process efficiently? Because again, these processes are not unique. These are unique to, it's common to every industry. And so making sure we are taking advantage of industries that do this work well and learning what we can to inform our own work. So, but I, I'm excited, this is great. And Ms. Smundrowski, do you have any questions? Okay. I think we're good.
And we have another slide, but we talked through it already because it's part of that communication and that tracking.
Okay.
So if, you know, if you don't have any other questions, I think we can move on.
Great. So on to another sexy topic. The next thing, item 6.2, Board Policies, DAA, DIG, and GIG. And I just first want to thank Mr. Riley for bringing to my attention the fact that the Office of Finance had identified these policies as needing to be updated because they simply no longer actually describe the way we do business. And it is a challenge. When we're talking about operational systems in a world of technology, these processes don't remain stagnant. They do evolve. And have, one of the things that I think that we talked about, and maybe you did too, is as, as we put this to policy management to review, is looking at ways to make the policy both effective, but also broad enough to allow for the innovation and the evolution of the business processes that they, that they describe. So I'm going to turn it over to you, and again, thanking you for bringing this forward as we want our policies to actually describe the work.
Thank you. And like you just said, during the summer, you know, Mr. Riley and staff, they review all the policies that are related to finance, identify these three policies to move forward, you know, identify as being in need of updates. Next slide, please. So these financial policies were recommended to the Policy Management Committee last week, and the committee included them in their work plan for the 2024-2025 school year. The first policy is the DAA Fiscal Responsibility and Control. And this policy was last updated in December of 2002. And this is, you know, just like Mr. Riley was mentioning when we were talking about the previous topic, you know, to establish and maintain fiscal responsibility and control of all the funds that are entrusted to MCPs. And so the recommendation is to consider including C policy-level language about additional fiscal responsibilities that have happened or have been implemented since this policy was last updated. The second policy, DIG Operating Funds and Investments, is establishes the scopes and objectives and guidelines for the investments of all of MCPs operating funds. And this includes our retirement and pension, as well as our schools' independent activity funds. So it's, it's, it's a large scope. And this policy, again, is being recommended for the same purpose, to consider policy-level language to revise practices that have changed, you know, since this policy was last updated as it applies to the pension fund investment and the funding and the county management of the post-employment benefit trust fund, better known as the OPEP Fund for retirees. And then last- And then, last but not least, we have the policy GIG, which is the Funding Retirement Pension System, which set forth the priorities for our employees' retirement and pension. And any, the changes that will be recommended for this policy, and more around technical amendments, office changes, office name changes, you know, as MCPS go through reorganizations, you know, those, just making, bringing that up to, you know, where the current organizational status is. And now, if you have any question?
I don't, Ms. Yang? No, just again, appreciate you identifying these things, moving it forward, and we'll, policy management will be taking them up this year, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, another one of my very favorite pieces of work we do in this committee is keeping a focus on the sustainability work of the system. We, through the work that we started in this committee, the board wholly and completely revised our old policy ECA to now be a sustainability policy a year and a half ago. It's ambitious, and it's the work we need to do to be in alignment with our county's climate action planning goals. This is, Montgomery County, Maryland has the most ambitious climate action policy in the country, and we are a big part of that work. And so, I, and it's just the work that we need to do. I don't know if anybody saw the Washington Post story yesterday about what's happening in Galveston with sea level rise. Climate change is real. And so, I appreciate the work that this group in particular has been doing. Sometimes not taking enough victory laps, I have to say. So, we're just going to get an update on what we taught. We talked about this last year, starting this energy savings performance contracting work. It is moving forward, it is in process, so we're just going to get an update about that. So, we are getting an idea of how that's gone with our first, you know, first 50 pod of schools and where we're going with the next group. And I just want to say, welcome to the table, Mr. Bumoon. This is your first appearance in the sexiest committee, so welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad to be here. Yes, my first time sitting in front of the board since I was appointed, so appreciate the warm welcome.
Okay.
We're excited to bring this topic to you. I know Mr. Roddy will give you an update, and we are very glad that, you know, Mr. Bumoon has joined us.
So, good morning. My name is Lynn Saratay. I'm the Director for Sustainability and Compliance in the Office of Facilities Management. Can we have the first slide, please? So, the first topic we're going to talk about is the progress we've made on our energy savings performance contracts. We were very fortunate to receive a $3 million grant through the ESSER program that allowed us to get a jumpstart this summer on the projects. We actually finished 56 projects this summer, which were mostly insulating the buildings, adding some window film at a few buildings, and doing some duct sealing. Those projects are substantially complete. The projects that are going to gain the most energy savings will be starting next month in the month of October. So, the lighting projects will be underway at almost all of the schools starting next summer. I mean, sorry, next month. But back to, you know, how many schools did we touch this summer? We actually had weather stripping and insulation projects at 41 of the schools. So, we got to the vast majority of those 50 schools in some way or the other. We will also be getting water conservation projects this summer, this winter, as well as building HVAC at three schools. And that's very significant. Now, it's important to remember that the main mission of these projects is to conserve energy. But at the same time, we are working on improving our building performance and improving our environment, making it a healthier learning environment for the students. So, of course, we will find some things that need to be repaired, and we are working through those various processes. We did a lot of preliminary retrocommissioning inspections this summer and have uncovered many things that need to be repaired and fixed. So, we'll be working towards that this next year or two. But bottom line, we're looking to reduce utility costs, reduce greenhouse gases. And while we know that there are some severe increases in energy costs coming, this will help contain those costs. Because if we hadn't done these projects, the price for our utilities would be even higher without doing these projects. So, more soon on that. We hope to begin our audits on the next set of schools sometime soon. I felt it was really important to get this batch of schools underway and learn from this batch of schools so we could get the contracts for the next set, you know, right? Because there's a lot of process stuff that we're learning and getting the contractors on board with how our schools are built and operate. So, we're going a little bit slower than we wanted to, but it's mainly so we get it right. We don't want to have to go back and fix things. Any questions on these contracts?
Just have we identified the next 50 schools?
We have a preliminary list, might be plus or minus one or two. And so, we're working through what that contract would look like. But again, I need to get these lighting projects launched next month before I'm comfortable with moving forward on those contracts.
And I just hope, I mean, I've been out in a lot of schools, you've been out in a lot of schools. We do have some schools who have significant facilities needs around things like HVAC. And the two that come top of mind for me are Silver Spring International Middle School and Greencastle Elementary. And are we prioritizing schools with those, that level of infrastructure need in this work?
So, when we picked the list of 50, we looked to have a broad kind of representation of the school system. Greencastle is actually in the first phase. We are in the process of looking at the HVAC at Greencastle. I actually visited Greencastle a couple of weeks ago. Silver Spring, I don't think is on the list right now. And remember, the focus of this is to try to make it self-funded. And so, we've had to add some extra capital funding to do the three HVAC projects. Right now, we don't have a major project identified at either of those two schools through this program. The schools we're working on for HVAC through this program is a partial retrofit of Loiderman, which has also got some HVAC concerns that we've been working through, as well as Smith Center and Montgomery Village Middle School would be getting a new chiller through this project. Those are very, very expensive projects. So, what we're doing is we're taking those energy savings dollars and turning them into infrastructure improvements. But we can't do everything at all the schools. What we're trying to do is much as we can through this self-funded model.
Yeah, and I appreciate the use of ESSER funds because ESSER, one of the purposes for which that money can be spent was infrastructure improvements that infect, like the healthy learning environment, which all of this clearly does.
Yes, we've already got some preliminary feedback that the window film has been amazing because those are the sides of the schools where it gets super hot, and now the film is presenting, preventing that super-hot temperature in the fall, so.
Yes, I do have a school I want to mention to you, but I'll do that. Well, I know Northwest particularly has some of those issues, but I don't know if they were in the first round of 50.
No, I don't think we're in the list. But, yeah, we're going to, we're going to try to get, we will get through every single one of these schools and identify these issues. The challenge is, again, we're trying to use that self-funded model with a little bit of capital infusion. And so, we're trying to pick the worst of the worst and the best of the best fiscal situation. But I will make a note on Northwood and SSI. Northwest, Northwest. Okay, next topic. This is the fun celebration one. Slide, please, next slide, please. So, we have been fortunate to receive significant funding both for outdoor classrooms and composting. And before we go into the details of this, what I want to say is that this really aligns with making that policy ECA a living document and really walking the walk of what we talked about, right? So, we're aligning with several of our implementation strategies, not only educating people and providing curriculum supports, but also providing opportunities for students to take action. So, this is, this is one of those policies that isn't dead. We're really, really working hard on it. So, next slide, please. So, our outdoor classrooms, we received two major grants this year. One of them went to the board in September. The other one had gone to the board in May. But they are to do some major work. At the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, we have funding for approximately six locations, which includes some of the work at Loiderman, but also at least five other sites. We have to do some site assessments before a positive will actually work. But now, we've got the money, and we can begin to do that work and begin the design and development there. In terms of the Chesapeake Bay Trust, that is a project that has been approved for College Gardens Elementary School, and design for that is just underway. And so, I've got some of my team members back here. Harris Tribman has been the leader of that, and I want to acknowledge his hard work in getting these grants because it was a lot of work to get the grants, and I really appreciate his work on that. Any questions on outdoor classrooms before we move on?
Just could you remind us again, the six schools? You already mentioned the work that's happened at Loiderman with the Urban Farm. Which other schools are going to be?
The other ones that we're looking at are Daly Elementary, New Hampshire Estates, Georgian Forest, Washington Grove, Watkins Middle Elementary, Sherwood High School, and Gathersburg Middle. So, those are the ones that are potential for this. We looked at making sure that we were considering equity and high-equity areas that needed this. Now, we've got to take a look at it because we were going to be combining stormwater infrastructure improvements with that and make sure that the grant has enough money to support the work at all those schools.
And what's the timeline on this grant?
We are getting moving now.
Okay, and because I know sometimes there's like a drop dead. It's got to, you've got to use the funds by X date. Is that true with this?
Two years. We've got two years to spend it.
Okay, all right, yeah, this is.
Very exciting work.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the way that a lot is happening on sustainability in the system. And a lot of it's very, very creative. And I hope, I want us to make sure that we celebrate that work and take, you know, bear witness to it. Because it's like a tree falls in a forest, and nobody's there to hear it, did it fall? You know, it's, a lot of people don't know all these things that MCPS is doing.
And to talk through the College Gardens process, we are engaging the staff and the students and the community as we're developing the design for this, right? We want it to be something that they want, something that they will plan to use, something that will incorporate in their curriculum. So, it is being very deliberate outreach to the community and making sure that it's really a win-win for all of us.
And the other partnership that I want to mention, you all were great partners last year with the inaugural group and the Student Climate Action Council. This year, we have a slightly expanded group, and I thank many of the people in this room who actually helped make the selection happen. And we had our first meeting earlier this month. And one of the things we really, really emphasized with them is, I think, some of the most important work that they can do this year is to build partnerships. And one of the most important partnerships they should build is with this office. So that as your office is identifying and identifying projects and moving ideas forward, the students are kind of alongside you and bringing both their energy, their perspective, but also their ability to help things happen and make sure people know about what's happening. And so, I'm hoping that they will be reaching out to you very, very soon to just be in regular connection with the work instead of, we have an event coming up, can you help us at that event? Or share information about it, but be part of the work sort of in a regular, ongoing way. Because they are, their also mission is that this year there will be a direct connection with every single school around the work. And one of the things they're going to be checking in on is the process of every school's sustainability plan. And so, I just, I think that's a very powerful partnership.
And that's a perfect introduction to our next topic. But you mentioned the sustainability plans. They are due next week, so we're in the process of reminding the schools that they're due next week. We had about 50 as of last Friday, but we usually get a whole bunch right near the deadline. So, we will keep you posted on that. But in terms of what you were talking about, about having the students involved, the next several slides are about student involvement. And I will also talk to where we have some needs and gaps and where we would love to have more student participation at many of the schools. So, next slide, please. So, I know the next topic was supposed to be composting, but before we talk about composting, the most important thing before we even think about trash is how can we recover the food in the schools? And I am so impressed that we had 82 schools participating in our food recovery program last year. Our goal is to get to 100%. So, again, that is absolutely something we would love to have the Student Climate Action Council help us with is, is making sure we have food recovery programs in all of our schools. We were able to reduce tons and tons, 133 tons of food from the schools. That's food that's delivered, packaged, produced, produces greenhouse gases just to get to the school, right? And to throw it in the trash would be such a shame. And so, these students are working towards collecting that and redistributing it to students that are hungry. You know, my son's an athlete, and he's hungry after school, right? So, it's a perfect win-win-win, and we're not spending money on trash, and we're saving greenhouse gases. So, it's just, I love to talk about this program because it doesn't cost any money, right? It doesn't require anything except for somebody putting it on the table, somebody picking it up from the table. So, and I want to give a shout-out to John Meyer and Youssef. They worked so hard to get those 82 schools running. And, but it wouldn't be without the students who actually make it happen at the school, right? We can, we can say, here's the program, but they've got to take it and make it a living program at their school. So, this is something we really would love to have the Student Climate Action students help us with moving forward. Many of the students like to go back, like a high school student likes to go back to their elementary school or their middle school and serve as a mentor to those students. So, that's another leadership opportunity for many of our students. Next slide, please.
If we can, Mrs. Saratay, can we have a pendants next time or as a follow-up? What those 80, which are those 82 schools? So, we can do outreach, targeted outreach.
Absolutely, we will share that with you. Okay, in terms of composting program, this is another area where the students led the effort. They collected thousands and thousands and thousands of postcards and worked with our elected representatives to get Maryland State funding for a grant where we were able, we didn't get the grant until April. And both staff and students worked really, really hard to get these programs launched at 19 schools last spring. They're also hoping to expand that program this year. But it's the same partnership of, okay, if we can't recover the food for consumption, maybe it's a half-eaten sandwich or something like that. What do we do next? Can we compost it? And so, that's the program that they worked at, and they were able to recover 43 tons of food waste that way. So, shout-out to those students for getting the grant funding and making it happen at those schools. And I'm sure you would like that the list of 19 schools, we also have six other schools that are doing composting that weren't covered under this grant funding, so we'll get you both of those lists. Next slide, please. Looking forward to what we also accomplished last year besides composting, and that's not required, but that the students just stepped up and helped incredibly with. Over the summer, we had 60 student volunteers, and that's what's shown on the left. They went through our toner cartridges and sorted them and recovered paper, they recovered plastic, they recovered these toner cartridges. We shipped a whole bunch back to Packard, who is planting 30 trees in MCPS's name We shipped a whole bunch back to Clue Packard, who is planting 30 trees in MCPS's name, as well as recycling those cartridges. But if it wasn't for those 60 students, all of the stuff would have been trash. None of it would have been recovered. So I'm so grateful that we had those students help us over the summer. They worked really hard for two weeks. Manual labor, taking the stuff apart, putting it in piles, and making sure it got to the right place. So thank you to those students. Also, we had 186 schools participate in our recovery program of magic markers that are old and not usable anymore, glue sticks, and single-use batteries. So that sounds almost 100% of our schools participating in that, but again, that's another area where our Climate Council students can take a look at the schools that didn't participate, and see if we can generate some interest in that moving forward. And last slide, please. One other major thing that we're working on this year is schoolyard cleanups trash that's out there. We are in need of 14 more high school student leaders to help us extend this to all of our high schools, and the high schools will be working with the clusters on these trash cleanups. We were able to work on 19 schoolyards and eight adjacent parks last year, but this year, we really want the students to take that leadership role, to get those days organized. We want them to be the organizers instead of us being the organizers. So at the moment, we have 11 schools that have committed, students at 11 high schools that have committed. We still need 14 more, so we'll share that with the Student Climate Action Council. But again, I am so proud of our students. I mean, they took, they took time in the afternoon, weekends, sometimes it was, you know, a field day activity or something like that. But, you know, taking responsible for local action, that's one of the things that we talk about in the sustainability plan, like making sure you've got a program at your school, something that's living, and something that everybody's participating in, not just one or two kids. But we do need those student leaders to help make it happen. So I want to give a shout-out.
Yes. Send me a list of the school, the 14 schools, I bet I can help.
You got it. Thank you. That's all I have for today, unless you have any other questions?
No. Like I said, we need to make sure that we're, that our students are helping to publicize and share information about these programs, because, you know, if students don't know, I mean, there's a lot of students that would step up, but if they don't know about it, they won't. So, yeah, this is great.
One of the things, I wonder whether the Climate Council students can help, is I do see battery is one area not as highly advertised as some of our other areas, the single-use batteries. If there are a shore reel or shore video, you know, I think a lot of students have these items at their house, right? They're using these things at their house, so that that can be.
And they can also recycle them at the county transfer station. We don't necessarily need to bring stuff from home. The county transfer station will take a lot of these, so what we're trying to do is capture school-based waste for the most part, but, you know, we will take some of the, obviously, you bring your marker from home, and you're using it at school, it doesn't work anymore, so you put it in the marker collection bin. So, but yet, just so everyone is aware that the county does have a recycling program for that also.
Is schools a place that students come every day?
Yep.
Yeah. Help out with the transportation.
Yep. Yep, absolutely.
Great.
Thank you so much for the time.
I appreciate hearing more about the work. I appreciate the work this team does, and I will be sending you all information and invitations to the next Student Climate Action Council meeting, so that we can really get that partnership energized, and help them to reach out to all of the schools that you're identifying with, to get this work moving. Because, you know, you empower people to do something. Small actions make a big impact. And, you know, some people feel a little overwhelmed and hopeless about the climate crisis. But this is something anybody can do, if we just give them, you know, the opportunity to, to get that program moving in their school, or be part of that work that's happening in their school. So I think we can get a lot of student energy around this stuff. So I, again, am very grateful and appreciate this work very, very much. Okay. The last item on our agenda is just for information, is the board's FY '24 expenditure report. Just ask my colleague if she has any comments or concerns. Okay. And if there's any new business? No old business, all right. Well, with that, we are adjourned, and thank, again, thank everybody for their time.